Good afternoon and welcome to this regular meeting of the Lakeville Area Schools Board of Education. This meeting is officially called to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members in attendance tonight include Director Kelleher, Director David Anderson, Chair Baker, Director Lind, Director Carley Anderson, and Director Shindley. The board is joined by Superintendent Dr. Doug Van Zyl, members of the Executive Cabinet, Bill Holmgren, Dr. Emily McDonald, Dave Haveman, Brenda Albrecht, and Stephanie Cass. We'll go on to the superintendent with good news.
All right. Good evening. Glad everybody's here with us. Well, I guess it's afternoon, not evening, so good afternoon. Our good news, we have Student of the Month. Lakeville Area Schools has a Student of the Month recognition program that highlights an elementary, middle school, and high school student each month, and the students are nominated by staff members. We're excited to announce that February's students are Kenneth Gents, a 4th grader at Lake Marion Elementary, Peter Vitelli, an 8th grader at Maguire Middle School, and Sabrine Mohammed, a 12th grader at Lakeville North. We also have Staff Members of the Month. Lakeville Area Schools is excited to have a monthly staff recognition program that highlights staff that are nominated by other employees. The Staff of the Month for February are Michelle Yoho, Office Manager at Lakeview Elementary, Kirsten Kopel, Student Support Specialist at Century Middle School. Congratulations to our students and staff members of the month. Lakeville Area High School students are awarded at the Visual Arts Exhibit. Ten pieces of student artwork from both Lakeville North and Lakeville South High Schools was recently presented at the South Suburban Conference Visual Arts Exhibit. It ran during the month of February at Normandale Community College. A big congratulations to four Lakeville Area High School students who took home awards for their art. We also have the Lakeville Cheer Program that excelled at state. The middle school squad took first place. On January 27th, Lakeville Cheer Program had five teams take to the mat with great success at the annual MCCA State Competition at Roy Wilkins Arena in St. Paul. All squads placed at state. A big congratulations to the middle school competition squad for earning the title of the 2024 MCCAA Middle School Division State Champions. Also, Lakeville South Encore places at ICHSA Great Lakes Quarterfinal. On February 3rd, Lakeville South High School Encore team placed third at the Great Lakes Quarterfinal for the International Championship of High School Acappella. Congratulations to Javier Hanson Sanchez, a 12th grader at Lakeville South, who was awarded Best Vocalist at the competition, and to the whole team for setting a new Lakeville South Encore record for the most points scored during their performance. Also, our Lakeville South Seniors organized Breaking Barriers: Empowering Futures, a career event for 8th through 12th grade girls. On January 12th, Lakeville Area Schools 8th through 12th grade female students attended Breaking Barriers: Empowering Futures, a career event organized by a group of Lakeville South seniors. The main idea behind the event was to inspire the next generation of girls to explore job opportunities in fields where women are the minority. Thank you to Haley Eastling, Anna Goodman, and Ashley Sutton, and Torey Teshada for taking this event, putting this event together, and showcasing women in unrepresented fields for the next generation to learn from. Great job to all of our folks. If you want to learn more about the school district, don't forget to jump on our website, ISD194.org/news.
All right. So it looks like we have one more member of the board in attendance virtually. Director Thompson, can you hear in reply so that we know that you are present?
Yes, Brian Thompson.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. All right. For Board Communications, I have Director Lind reviewing some of our recent stakeholder sessions.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes. Last Tuesday, we were very busy. Judy, Carley, and I were at the stakeholder session before our work session. We had nine people that spoke that evening, and they were about the following topics. Six were parents and staff whose topic was the contract negotiations. And we had two parents talk about proposed boundary adjustments. And we had one person whose topic was the Kenwood land sale.
Thank you for your update on that. Director David Anderson, did you have an update for M917?
Yes. Good news, we had our teachers approve their contract by 97%, and we are now moving on to negotiating a new contract for the superintendent.
M917 is our member district that handles all of our Level 4 services for students with special needs, though, just for clarity there. Do any other board members have any communications that they would like to share at this time? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. There are no additions to the agenda tonight, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the night? We have a motion by Director Lind. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Director David Anderson. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for approval of the agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Director Shindley. Do we have a second? Second by Director Carley Anderson. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right. So the next thing we have are, we don't have any consent agenda discussion items, we don't have reports, but we do have some reports with recommended actions. So we'll start with the Attendance Area Adjustment Plan.
So Dr. McDonald's going to come forward and kind of walk you through. You saw a majority of these slides at the work session. I think you'll just have to either use the thing, or I think we tell them to move forward, and they'll click through the slides.
All right. I'm missing my computer here. I will, I'll have them click back there, so.
The clicker should have worked.
It works?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Good evening, Board Chair Baker, Dr. Van Zyl, members of the Board of Education. Happy to be here tonight to present or review with you what we covered at our work session last week related to our two models for our boundary adjustments. So this will cover models D and 3, along with any feedback that we received related to these two models from our survey. Hmm.
Maybe not. You're going the wrong way.
Okay. Here we go. So the first model that we brought forward for consideration was our Model D3. As you can see, those are our elementary boundaries. You can see just some changes related to Lake Marion, specifically compared to E3, which I'll show you in just a minute, as well as Lakeview and the JFK areas primarily. Some shifts you'll see to the north in our northern schools. I keep going the wrong way. There we go. Okay. This was our elementary modeling for E3. So if I can just click back from D3 so you can again see what those adjustments look like, you see Lake Marion in particular doesn't go as far over on our map. You see the Lake Marion, or I'm sorry, the Lakeview area shifting a little bit, as well as the Orchard Lake primarily. And then again, in the middle, you do see some adjustments there based on a number of students in those particular areas. For our middle school model, this is D3. So again, these models come together. So the D3 Elementary and the D3 Middle School come together. So you can see the Maguire border there, along with Century in the yellow, and then Kenwood in the blue. And the difference between that model and our E3 model is just some slight shifts down in the Maguire border, as well as on the northern end, related to the Kenwood and Century borders. So that's E3. One of the things that we spent quite a bit of time talking about was understanding the pathways of students as they move through our system. So on the far left, you can see, this is currently where our students go as they progress through elementary, middle, and high school. In the D3 draft, again, you see the same three. What you'll notice is that we have fewer splits than we do currently in our system, and that holds true of D3 as well. So in fact, we have fewer splits in D3 than we do in E3 than we do in D3, but all of them are an improvement from what we have currently in our system. So in terms of input, one of the first things the design team did when they were finalizing the models was to really go back to the Guiding Change Document to determine if we had met the criteria that was provided for us. So as you can see, with the exception of working on special education transition programming, we did meet all of the desired results that were identified through the Guiding Change And this document was a document that we kept in front of the teams regardless of which team, at all times, to make sure that they were aware of what they were focusing on in terms of their charge. Our design team then went through D3 and E3 and identified both strengths and challenges. As we know, we've talked about a number of times, there is not any perfect model, and so what we wanted to do was just have some conversation around each of these models and where we saw they would benefit the system and where some challenges might be. So you can see those, we talked a little bit about these at the work session. There are some similarities between D3 and E3 in terms of strengths and challenges, but really you can see the criteria that was met in each of these models. In terms of challenges, we did look at capacity utilization, especially in our more landlocked areas. There was some conversation about what that space could look like if there was additional space in those buildings to be able to address some programming needs as we continue to grow as a district. We talked about Lakeview, who is current, would currently be more full than some of our other buildings. Being on the south side was not ideal, but certainly something that we felt like would be manageable over time. And then, of course, we've had numerous conversations about our middle school and the need for additional space there. That will be our next sort of place where we will need to do something, make some adjustments over time as our elementary students progress into middle school. So we're looking at the timing around that. And then in terms of demographic balance, Highview, mainly due to its location, we looked at Highview's borders, boundaries, in many, many different ways, and just because of the location, it does have a lower population of students that are receiving educational So in terms of E3, I'll actually start on the challenges side. What you see is we have the same challenge in E3 as we did with D3 in two areas, and that was primarily in Lakeview, as well as our middle schools. We won't, we will definitely have to address our middle school situation at some point in the next couple of years as our students in the elementary, as I said, progress through the system. We do have more of a demographic balance in D3, so we see a little bit less of that in our E3 model. And then we have a couple of buildings that are outliers in terms, again, of our students that are receiving educational benefits, and that's primarily due to simply where those lines were drawn. The other thing to note is, as compared to D3, E3 moves 100 additional elementary students, so we have 100 more students shifting in the E3 model as we do in the D3 model, and then 90 additional middle schoolers move in the E3 model than in the D3 model. In terms of our input team, this was the breakdown of how they responded to our survey. You can see 50% selected D3, and then it looks like 35, I can't read that from here. 35% is E3, and then 15% no preference. Some of the themes that came out of the input team feedback on round three, again, some positives were that there were clear boundaries, least impact on the number of students in D3, and better demographic balance across our middle schools. As you can see, some themes in E3 really talked about our pathways from elementary, middle, to high school, that there was a reduction in that, as well as the demographic disparities, and it kept neighborhoods more together. Some other comments that, themes that came out of our round three feedback with our input team is they talked about the desire to allow for grandfathering, so that was a theme that came out. They also, there was also a theme from that group around transferring and making sure that there was clarity around what that looked like or didn't look like, making sure that certainly the parents understood what that process was. There were some comments around academic performance and the impact to boundary adjustments related to that, and then they felt like the models did embrace community feedback with, between the design team, the input team, and the feedback that was provided through our open, our open process on the website. And then we provided a one final opportunity for people to weigh in. The question was, which model do you prefer? It was either D3, E3, or no preference, and you can see the results of that. We had 1,672 unique responses to that survey. And then just a quick review, we did review this information last week at the work session, had some discussion around the D3, E3 models, as well as the feedback processes, and then we are bringing it here today for recommended action. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Van Zyl if he has anything to add.
No, thank you, Emily. The only thing I would point out, I think, is through that process, Emily did a nice job of recapping where you were at. You do have each one of the groups being consistent in what they are recommending as far as the votes that took place in there, so that does give you a little bit of guidance if you're leaning one way or another. From the design team, I would tell you, they lean toward D3 as well. So with that, we'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions from board members? Director Thompson, did you have a question? It looked like you were trying to, yes, okay.
Yeah. Yep. So I apologize for the noise. Let me not hear too many noises in the background. So first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank all the participants in part of this process. It's not easy when you're trying to figure out where to place and put together a map for 11,800 students and all the parents and stakeholders that are involved, so it's not going to be perfect. But I do appreciate the time the design team put in, the input team, and the process that kind of been around it. You know, when I look at the model for D3 as well as E3, I kind of want to, I had a chance to kind of reflect back, and obviously we have the guiding principles that we put together back in September, which allowed the teamwork as well as the various stakeholders of how they would want to approach putting these boundaries together. And that approach is more of ensuring capacity utilization of all of our locations, as well as, you know, because the current design that we have in our boundaries is not ideal. It's hard to be transparent. It's probably a hot mess just because we've got things in various locations, and buses will go across boundaries, so no matter which way it go, there's a higher probability that there would be cost savings and efficiency savings in doing the boundary changes. And so, you know, going through the process itself for myself, there has been more things that I've learned along the way, and I think it makes sense for me to kind of be mindful that, are we, the things that I've learned, have we, are they being incorporated, or should they be incorporated in how we do the boundary changes? Because I'm very, I would be mindful of our forward-looking, future state guide. We've got a bunch of kids that will be impacted in this plant capacity, but again, the mindset and the approach that we went after this, or the guiding principles that we put in place, was to make sure that we've got even capacity across the board. And I look at the D3 model, you know, you've got quite a few kids in capacity, that is like, you know, Orchard Lake, Christina Hudson, and Oak Hills, all at the 71, 69, 81% in year one. You've got the schools in the middle pocket, Eastview, Cherryview, Highview, Lakeview. I mean, Cherryview's at 66%, 69% in year one capacity, but Lakeview's sitting at 94% right off the bat in year one, and JFK at 82%. And so, you know, that kind of model doesn't make sense to me when I look at E3 then. You know, you've got Orchard Lake, Christina Hudson, and Oak Hills, sitting at about 85, 82, 78%. That makes sense in that model. The middle schools for Eastview, Cherryview, Highview, Highview's sitting at 60% right off the bat in year one, and doesn't even get to like, it gets to like 74% capacity in year six. So that doesn't really, as I see those metrics and the growth, it doesn't look like we're setting that up correctly. And then Lakeview as well, we're sitting at about, I think, 97% in year one in capacity in JFK, at 69% in year one. So I share some of those metrics, as I kind of looked at the documents and back and forth. I'm not ready right now, because I don't think these two are very, the options that we should consider. I understand there's a desire to keep us on track from a timeline point of view, but I also want to make sure that when we make these boundary changes, we're not changing them again three years from now, if we don't have to. So let's make sure we do it right so that we have the least amount of kids impacted three, four years from now. We know there's growth that's going to be more than likely happening in Front River or the south, a little bit in the east side by Highview, but can we design it in a way where we have the least amount of schools impacted in three to four years as we anticipate the growth? A couple of options would be to ensure, you know, obviously, how do we capitalize on landlocked locations like Orchard Lake area? We know there aren't going to be a lot of homes growing up there, or developments occurring. Can we create a boundary where, while it may not be at 100% capacity, but those kids are set? Like, we're not going to touch those kids, we're not going to touch that boundary area in five, six, seven, eight years from now. Same with Christina Hudson, or at Oak Hills. And so, I think based on what I'm seeing and what I've heard and the feedback that I've had, I'd love for us to ask the administration to go back to the drawing board and say, hey, what would be a hybrid model that makes sure that we're thinking more future state so that we have the least amount of buildings impacted in three to four years? So that, so those are my initial thoughts right now.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you, Director Thompson, for your comments. Director Carley Anderson, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah. I know I brought up Lakeview in our discussion last week, and I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, are we, just because I think when I asked about, okay, so capacity is really 85, I mean, that's terrible to get up to 85, 90%. Really, we want our schools to be sitting closer to 75% capacity. That feels comfortable. So is part of this, like, I guess what I'm reflecting on, and I know we can't know the future, but if we think about trying to get some of our schools that are more landlocked to the 70, 75% capacity, and Lakeview is, I asked about Lakeview, I'm concerned about Lakeview, but is the goal to consider something more south that would be an elementary that you would pull from Lakeview, JFK, so that we're not disrupting as many kids in the north, or at that point, if we're building south? That, to me, is something that is much more long-term strategic planning, that we fill our southern schools more because then we're going to pull from them in the future. And if we don't get approval for that, then what's, what do we do for Lakeview?
Yeah, I can respond to at least part of your question. Thank you for that. You know, part of our conversations were really around not just what's happening today, but also what is happening long-term. And it is a balance between understanding where the growth is, as well as what we, what we think we're projecting. First of all, they're all based on projections. Now, our projections are generally pretty good, but things like house turnover, as well as development, it can depend on a number of factors. So we do the best job that we can to have conversations about what we, what we believe to be as true as we know it to be at the time, as we're planning. So there was a lot of conversation around that south end, and we do know that we will see most of, a lot of our growth, most of our growth is going to happen on the south side. So as we're thinking down the road, that's definitely something that came into consideration. The other piece of that is that in some of the other models, Lakeview, as I recall off the top of my head, one of the other models, it was reduced down to 66%. In another model, it was more sort of in the middle, but then we, it was an early model, and we had significant feedback around the fact that the lines were drawn through neighborhoods, and so that was, that came up as sort of a theme, like, we don't want to, you know, split up the neighborhoods. So, yes, so we are trying to think both in terms of current numbers, as well as in terms of long-term, and what would be the, what can we do that would potentially be less disruptive over time? As you all know, we haven't done boundaries in, you know, well over a decade, and so I think this is a long time coming, so what we're seeing is we're seeing a higher level of disruption than we would like to see certainly for families. And so we have been talking about what that looks like in the future if we have to, if we have to make some changes.
The other thing I would add to your, the design team did look at trying to put buildings at capacity. I think we shared that, I know we did when we met with Brian, Dr. McDonald and I shared that, but it threw your numbers out of whack, our numbers out of whack in regard to the other areas that you're taking a look at, so it was even more disproportional in regard to free to do lunch, ethnicity, those types of things. And so that was part of the reason, based off of the guiding document as well, that that design team, at least I remember from the conversation, was like, this is too far off. To go with that capacity issue and still try to align things, they didn't, that wasn't going to be manageable in their mind to do that. So they did try to take a look at that. We did try to take a look at trying to do some of those adjustments, and as Dr. McDonald shared, you know, wood that we could, we had a crystal ball, we knew exactly where some of these things were going to happen, you know, that would be helpful. But the challenge for us is, as she just said, it would have been nice if there had been an adjustment three or four years ago, smaller adjustment three or four years this year, three or four years from now, so that you could get all the way through the process and making minimal disruptions. It is going to be a little bit bigger disruption based off of just the amount of time that it took place, and you've seen our boundaries where they are right now. There is a hodgepodge, Emily calls it a patchwork quilt of some sort. So we did try to take a look at those as far as capacities as well.
Director Thompson, I do see your hand up, but I am going to let Director Kelleher go first, just so that we try to make it even for everyone to have a chance to talk first and ask questions before someone has a second chance. So Director Kelleher?
Yep. So a couple of things. I think, first of all, for those who don't know me and my family, we moved here in 1986. So I had four kids that went through the schools, and in 1990s, they were opening elementaries every other year, and we were doing boundary adjustments either every other year or sometimes every year. I understand that it's extremely emotional, and it's a very challenging time, and all the emails and the involvement that we've had from our community is appreciated. It's really a hard, this is a hard topic to think about from a district perspective because there's so many personal, emotional decisions that families are going to be making. I think it's really important that, we talk about landlocked schools, I don't think there's such thing as landlocked schools. Yes, there are some schools that are going to have less or no more building around them, but the life of the neighborhoods do change. My neighborhood went from having 26 to 30 students in a My neighborhood went from having 26 to 30 students in a cul-de-sac to no students in the cul-de-sac, back to having 12 and 15 students in the cul-de-sac. So we have to know that even though they're landlocked from building, the students flows in and out, and I think we have to be very careful not to give our community a false sense of hope, that if we do the right thing now with either approving or not approving these, that we're going to be holding boundaries for three or four years. As we know with the growth, what has been talked about, and definitely are going to be talking to our community about needing some sort of space solution for our middle schools. We also are going to need another space solution if projections go as we see happening for another elementary. And so the long-term, I'm going to say this again, I say this all the time, our district is only maybe a third developed. We have two-thirds of our school district that is not developed yet. And so the growth is going to continue, and we're going to need to know how to address this from a district perspective, and continue to do it in a way that honors our staff and honors the families that have to go through these transitions. And so I think it's really important, I do not agree with Director Thompson about going back to the drawing board. Back in September and October, we talked extensively about the process and the timeline. In September, we agreed that we would engage this process, we established the guiding principles, we talked about this multiple times, we had 3,000, 4,000 pieces of input from our community around this, and of course, many of those pieces conflicted with each other when they became about personal requests and pleas, which I totally understand. But I think we have to hold true. We are on this board to make the tough decisions, we have to be making a decision by the end of tonight, out of respect for our staff. I've shared it in a couple of work sessions, and I shared it again in our last work session. Our meet and confer with our teachers' representatives are asking that we have this decision completed by the end of this month so that we can get staffing in place. From an operational perspective, we need it done because our busing company needs to redo routes to make this work. And most importantly, our families and our principals need the time to put the transition plans in place to get the new families and the exiting families all in a good transition plan and process to be welcomed into these new schools. And, and I think that it's really critical as leaders that we respect all of these decisions that have been done by our input team, and by our design team, and all the input from our community that has really asked us to continue forward and make a decision in time for what's best for the district. I think it also allows our staff the time to put together the operational processes and the resource supports for our students that are needed in these, in these buildings because this is kind of a, I mean, this doesn't seem to be associated to education, but it is. We need to be able to transition those children correctly and appropriately, and get their families to feel engaged in the new buildings so our students can continue to have success with their education. So when all is said and done, this isn't just about changing boundaries, this is about changing boundaries to develop a plan that's going to work best so our kids can continue to be educated, and our staff can continue to do the job that they do with focused on the classroom and our children, rather than when are they going to be done with this decision so we can start doing our piece of it. So I do think it's absolutely critical that we move forward. Having even capacity across the board with the buildings is not something that I think is actually feasible. We talked about that with our guiding principles, and we had shared that we really do need to figure out not only what's going to work for this next school year, but for the next few years as we go into facility and building discussions. So I think there's a lot that needs to be done here, and I think we need to make this decision in a timely manner. We approved this process as a board, we've been brought along in this process as a board, we've been engaged and involved in this process as a board, and now it's time as leaders to make the decision with respect again to our staff and our families. As hard as it may be on some of the families, we want to be there beside you, and we need the time to get that transition done and done well.
Thank you Director Kelleher. Board, I just want to be clear that I am trying to give everybody a chance to talk first before I take second comments, so Director Thompson, just hang in there, because I know this is something that everyone would like to comment on and ask questions about. So Director Lind?
Thank you. Well, maybe you can tell and can't tell, I've been through a lot of, a lot of boundary changes. In fact, I think this is why I got the hair the way I do, but anyway. Been through a lot of boundary changes, and I need to reflect on this one. I have never been associated with boundary changes that have had so much opportunity for input and from, from the stakeholders. I've never seen a process that's had as many stakeholders involved and being involved with the decisions as I've seen with this one. And then, what's even better, I think, is that that input came in, and we had like two changes based on the input of the parents and, and the group, the input committee, the parent input, that made changes. And so their input was effective. So as for the process, I don't, I don't think we've had a better process. I think this has been the, the best that we've ever had, dealing with a issue which you don't win. You don't win on boundary changes. It's kind of like budget cuts in a way, you just can't win. People are affected by it. And how, and how those boundary changes are, changes are implemented by the principals is fantastic. I think, I think you'll find people that are affected by other moving schools, that there'll be a great process for you to get used to the new school and have your, have your students feel comfortable there. That being said, I look at the two plans, I see the one plan where there seems to be more positive support for D3 by the input committee, by the, the parents that provided the input. So that's important to me, that I support that type of input. I mean, 59% preferred it, and then you had like, I don't know, 5% that said it didn't matter, so you're over 60% totally regarding that. And secondly, our job is to provide, I think, the best environment we can for our kids. And the less students that we move, I feel, the better. We were, I think was mentioned, it was 100 elementary students less under D3, and 90, 90 middle school students less under D3. To me, that's a really important fact. We, whatever we do impacts kids, and we want to reduce the negative impact as much as we can. So that's my thoughts on the process and on the, on the two, on the two plans. Thank you.
Director David Anderson?
I just want to say, I appreciate the concerns from the input, from the public comment, from the people in the audience, and all the other comments, because as a parent of a special education student, I have to deal with this every year. My two children, each went to different elementary schools, each went to different middle schools, and each went to different high schools. And so I know it's a stress, you know, major concern for those parents, and I agree with Terry. I think they, I think they did, I think the design and input team did a, did a good job on, on the process, so. Is it perfect? No. And is everybody going to be happy? No. But they're never happy with us, so.
Director Thompson?
Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, we did agree on the process back in December, or September. So I am not saying that the process was flawed, because I think the process is the right process, because we've got feedback in the community and so forth. What I want to be mindful is that just because we went through the process, doesn't mean that the results is maybe what we want to think about, or is the ideal result. And so, you know, there's a short-term and a long-term point of view that we've got to be mindful as we kind of put this together. And, and like, for Director Carly Anderson, I, I agree. I mean, there is a long-term view where we may want to increase the capacity for JFK and, and Lakeview as, as the option. And, and the way the current models for D3 sits, for Lakeview, you start off at 91%, JFK, you're at 79%. I mean, why wouldn't we want to have them more equally balanced out, knowing that if we add another elementary school, only those two schools would be impacted? And so by year three, Lakeview is sitting at 101%, and then JFK is roughly sitting at about 88% capacity. When you look at the E3 model, the Lakeview starts off at 94% capacity in year one, and I think in year one, we're looking at also like 79% capacity for JFK. And so when we think about that long-term view, we're not really, I, I don't believe these models are built for that long-term lens, in my opinion. And so what I think we should consider then is make sure that, like, while these two options are the input from the community, and I want to be mindful that their input is valuable, but their input may be focused on the current state, not thinking about the future state of where our boundaries and where our growth are going to come from. And that will play a part in the design of, of the boundary, boundary itself. The timeline, we do need to get this done fairly quickly. Last year, we didn't approve our budget deficit cuts until April 11th, which then impacted our community, our, our teachers. And so there is a desire to have it sooner than that, obviously, and, and we want to, but also want to make sure that we do it right the first time so that we don't have to make changes later. Here's my biggest concern. I don't want to do this three or four years from now because all the first graders and potentially second graders may have to go to different schools in fifth grade. And, and so if we're trying to minimize the amount of student impact, like, let's, let's be thoughtful and be prudent on how we make this decision, and ensure that we've got the best possible design, most optimal design for the growth of our community. So those are my thoughts.
Are there any further questions or comments by board members? Director Shindley, we haven't heard from you?
I want to just first off, first off, say thank you to everyone who's worked very hard on this. It's been, it has been, for a first year, coming in and, and experiencing everything that's going on. I've had a lot of mixed emotions, just, you know, not per se from my kids' standpoint. Granted, don't, don't get me wrong, I love the school that they're in, but I understand that there needs to be change. But I also do have, you know, concerns about capacity as well, and where we're at, and just putting the forefront of how many more kids, how many kids do we want to affect down in the future, is kind of where I am. I do agree with Director Thompson in that sense. I do agree with everyone else as well on, yes, we need to get staffing, we need to get that done as well. But is there a way that we can, you know, somehow work through this a little bit more to, before the staffing date is? When is the staffing date again, of when you have to have?
In Mar, is it March?
Well, the exact staffing is soon as possible, but I believe it's the middle of March. The middle of March is when it has to be taken care of, but I can tell you there's already districts out.
Right.
Similar to last year, I think our staff would tell you as far as recruiting and trying to hire people. So you always try to get out as soon as you can, but contractual deadline is, I think, the 15th of March, is that accurate?
Right. I'm not trying to, to put big, big turns into the, the process, it's just, I also want to be sure that we're making sure that we're looking at that long-term effect too, not just the current, but in that long-term sense as well, so.
And I would say this, and Emily can chime, and Dr. McDonald can chime if she wants, I, I would tell you, and several of you sat as part of the design team, I do think they looked at the long-term. The challenge is, we can't 100% forecast what that is. I think everybody's intent regardless of, of which model gets selected is when change happens again, because it's going to have to happen again if we continue to grow like we are. We would have the same parameters in some way, shape, or form as what we have now, trying to impact as few as kids as possible. And, and how that plays out, I can't tell you where the growth is going to happen. You know, the example of a balloon, you take a balloon, you push on it, it's going to expand someplace else because you put pressure someplace else, and we don't necessarily know where all that pressure is. The economy has an impact, inflation has an impact, what communities open up as far as the type of lots. There's some legislation right now that would throw a huge wrench into the growth in the community because it basically says you can build whatever you want, you could tear down your house and build an apartment building on your property. And so that, that legislation, I don't think it's going to pass, but there, there's just examples of, there's things at play that we don't control. And I do think the design team tried to mitigate those things that take them into account as best they can. I don't know, Emily, if you want to share anything else on that?
No, I would just reinforce what you said, is taking all the information that we have, the things that we know to be true, as well as the predictions that we have around future growth and where that is. We really did, we looked at it from that standpoint, and then again, really looked at it from a, when you look at short-term, long-term, we don't want, if we can avoid it, we would, we don't want to have significant disruption twice in a row. So, so if we, and as we moved pieces on that south end, I can tell you from my perspective, there was no real way to get that in a perfect place because of where neighborhoods are placed, because of bus routes, because of the highway, because of a number of factors, because we, the, the teams literally sat there with one of our programmers, our support folks from tech, and would say, take this piece and move it over here, and then, and then the numbers would be, you know, JFK would be at 100%, and Lakeview would be at 66%. So we did, as we went through every piece of feedback, and we looked at the themes of that feedback, and literally would pick up, pick up neighborhoods and move them here and there in ways that tried to honor the, the process and the guiding change. We just couldn't land in, in maybe the most desired spot just because of a number of factors. So when we looked at that, then what we want to do is we want to prioritize trying to mitigate significant disruption in the future as we continue to grow. There's no question that we will continue to grow, and we have a really good sense of where that growth is coming from, and that we will have to do something as a district down the road, probably in a shorter term than we would like around space. So, so those conversations did happen. And we did, I would say that we had three, two to three teams working on those designs with the design team, and they really did try to go through and figure out if there were ways that, that those pieces of feedback could be addressed, and in some cases, they could be, and in some cases, they couldn't be. But they took that job very seriously of building a model that sort of honored the feedback that we got from all of the various sources from which we got it. So I don't know if that perfectly answers your question, but I, what I can say is that those were topics of conversations at the table, and at the end of the day, the design team came to consensus around the two models to bring forward based on all of those factors and all of that work, and looked at, and, and how they looked at things in a number of different ways.
Director Kelleher?
So if I remember it correctly, I don't have the guiding principles up in front of us, but I know we had talked about when we were doing the guiding principles, looking for short-term and long-term solutions, the longest-term solution that we could provide, knowing that we were going to continually grow, and that we had more facility needs in a few years. And so I'm not sure between now and when we have to have a decision made for staffing purposes by March 15th, what could possibly change enough, knowing that in our work sessions, when this was brought to us in the touch base work sessions, the long-term look was something that was continually brought up. So I know I sat in on both the input meetings, and I also sat in on one of the design meetings, and that discussion- And that discussion was talked about, was discussed, and was what was looked at. If I'm not mistaken, that the opening or the availability of space that we have in JFK, part of that is because one of our larger growing areas is Elko New Market, which feeds up into JFK. And so that's, that provides them the room for that growth that we're expecting as Dr. Van Zyl works with the city administrators and from Elko New Market, from the city of Lakeville, from the other cities, Credit River Town, or City of Credit River. There's so many cities that we have now, I can't keep track of them. But I think it's, we all know that this has been discussed from the short term view and the long term view. And as a, you know, as a first time for new board members to go through this, I get it. I know it's not easy, but I think you do need to trust the process that you've approved and put into place and that we've been brought along with and that your voice, your voice as board members and being concerned about the short term and the long term solution has been addressed. And I'm not sure that there's anything that can happen in the next two weeks that's going to change anything dramatically except draw out this. And so the sooner we can get to the street with staffing and getting those needs filled and again, letting the principals know what neighborhoods are coming into their buildings so they can start developing their outreach and welcoming these families, the better off this district will be.
Yeah, I just want to say that part of this for me has, well, this has been really hard, I will just say. So just for school member 101, if you're ever thinking of becoming a school member, this is the tough stuff, of course, as we've gone through many tough things in our tenure so far. But when I ask the question of kind of what happens with these capacity things and what I hear from you, Dr. McDonald, and what I have heard and trust is the design team was thinking about all of these things and you were running the numbers. And what we don't have the luxury of, and nor should we have the luxury of, is exactly all the teamwork numbers and how those things shift and how they go. So ultimately, I, I trust our design team. I appreciate the input from our input team. I very much appreciate everybody who's reached out. I want you all to know that, you know, my, me personally, my family's affected by this, my neighborhood's affected by this. I have had to take a step back from that and I really think about what is best for our community. I wanted to share that growing up, I moved every four years. So not just schools, but I moved cities, towns. I hated it every single time. I begged and pleaded with my parents, please don't make me move. And I'm going to share this because I think it's really important, and I know this is aside from what we're talking about here, but as a mental health professional, it's very important for me to share this. My parents always showed confidence in my ability to do that. And their encouragement of my resilience was really, really key to me making a good transition. My mother is very wise. Every time she said, give it a year. And if you, at the end of that year, are still upset about this move, she's like, well, I don't know what we're going to do, but give it a year. And I've taken that advice countless times in my life when I've moved to college, moved to grad school, all these kinds of things. And every time, I'm always grateful that I've made new friends, I've done new things, I've had a new adventure. And so I think the majority of our kids will be resilient through this. Majority is not all. And I do want to, you know, as someone who advocates for all, I want to be very, that's been on my heart. And I know that not all kids are going to thrive in this change, but I think as a system, we need to be ready for that and as best we can be to support those kids, support all kids. And so, but I just, I do want to emphasize to our families, our parents particularly, your kids are going to be looking to you for your reaction. And as someone who is really impacted by this, I've had to make sure I'm staying positive with my kids and just be thinking about that in terms of how that influences their response. So I thank everybody who has been involved in this. It's been a lot of work. It's been a really interesting experience to be in this role and I'm going to make the decision that I think helps us move forward and to Terry's point earlier, is best supported by, at all the levels. And that's going to be my approach. So thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like somebody to address the safety of the kids caught in the highway because we can't wait.
Sorry, we can't have comment from the public at this time. Thank you.
So I do, like, when I'm thinking through this whole process, I do want to draw attention to the guiding changes document and just make sure that we also notice that, yep, we have a lot of green checkboxes there, but we also have a big TBD, which means to be determined for our special education students. In discussions with Dave Haiman, that decision for our population of students can't be made until we make this decision. So we have special education programs that we're also trying to align to feed from our elementary into our middle schools so that that feeder system happens too. And we can't make that decision or he can't move forward with that until we make a decision at this table. I am going to add a personal note that, you know, I have had kids in special education in Lakeville and that did impact my children. I had one child that was able to attend our neighborhood school. I had another child that had to go clear down across the city limits for special education programming. And then there were the tears when that program didn't align with the same students and they weren't allowed to follow those peer relationships. So we want to be very mindful that all of this impacts all of our students. There's not going to be a perfect decision, but we also need to keep in mind what's best for all of our students. When I, when I think about that, when I look at the two models, you know, there's positives and negatives with both. And we have to weigh what works better for our students in the here and now, right now. And I mean, we also have to think about the future and be mindful of that. So I do honor what you're saying, Director Thompson, and I understand where you're coming from too. But I also have to think about like, how can we pick one of these two models? And I guess from my viewpoint, I'm looking at, you know, E3 has fewer splits and it keeps neighborhoods together. And the reason that that resonates with me is because I saw the difference in my two kids when they were able to attend their neighborhood school versus the ones that were not. So what that did when they weren't able to attend their neighborhood school is it shut down neighborhood inclusion. So I didn't have knocks on the door for my kids because nobody in the neighborhood knew them. So to me, it's really important to try to keep those neighborhoods together. And when I look at the E3 model, it does keep more neighborhoods together. When we try to figure out like how many students are impacted, what students are going to be impacted with either model, it's just how was that impact? So D3 is a little bit different because you have less students moving versus E3, but there are fewer splits and how those things transition into the middle school environment too, which we've already said is very important. So I think from a perspective of a board member, like you just need to think about what's the best decision for our students in our district and trying to figure out which of these two models we move forward with. Are there any other comments from board members or questions about anything? I don't want to cut off anybody's thought process. Director Thompson, did you have something else to add?
No, I mean, I mean, if I look at the models, I agree with you. I like E3, I think that's a better model than G3. But I also want to recognize that, you know, if the goal is long term as well, the capacity for Lakeview, Lakeview in the E3 model for year one, two, and three is 97%, 101% and 104% in year three. And for JFK, it's year one, 69%, 71%, 74%. So when I look at the, how it's designed or structured, like that, there's an imbalance. And so I get that there's growth coming further south. This includes, these models include what those growths are. So I'd like to see more of a hybrid of what an E3 model might look like with JFK as well as Lakeview more even out so that they maybe both might hit 95% capacity by year three if that's possible. I would like the E3 model to maybe shorten up, maybe the Orchard Lake boundaries because if you look at the E3 model for Orchard Lake, like you're all the way down by a quarter house and then you're zoned to go to Orchard Lake when Lakeview is like literally right down the street. And so I feel like if we could take advantage of it in E3 model with some minor tweaks to it, like that's the role of our job. Like we can provide input and say, hey, I like these models. They don't have to be the final models, but here's a few tweaks that we would recommend making updates, updates to the guiding principles. Because I think the E3 model requires 90% of that capacity neither. So if we know the growth is coming down there, what are we going to do to make sure that the capacity reaches whatever that threshold might be by year three and four with the anticipation that a new middle school or elementary school needs to be brought on board? And then when it does, it alleviates some of the capacity constraints. So if you do that further south, you land lock Orchard, Christina, and Oak Hills, create a boundary where we minimize the amount of changes that those may have in four, five, six, seven years from now. Maybe there won't be any changes. That, that really limits the number of kids that would be impacted when we have to do a future boundary change. And then hopefully, if you do those two frameworks in mind, then the schools that are in the Middle East, you know, on the east side, like they're not going to be at 100% capacity. Maybe you can get them set with it, maybe 80% right off the bat. And so there may be a really good opportunity in a model where the only schools that might be impacted in year three and four might be your JFKs and Lakeviews only. So that's where I'm trying to get to. And I don't think that's how E3 and E3 doesn't get me there.
Is there, can you respond to that, like as far as like the E3 and tweaking it, just so that people are.
Yeah, Chair Baker asked me to respond a little bit to that. If you remember as a board, you voted on a process and your process is not to make tweaks and adjustments to the models that are there. It's either to accept or decline because then basically you're throwing out all the input from the community by making tweaks or adjustments. And so that's what you as a board voted on. That's what you said that was the process you were going to follow. So I understand what he's saying, but that, I was asked to expand on that. So that's what I did.
Being mindful of the time, it's a little bit after 5:30. We've had a lot of question and answers with, and discussion around the boundary adjustments. I just want to make sure that we're all aware that we do have to end this meeting by 6 o'clock just based on the fact that we have to be done based, you know, on, because of the Lex. Yeah, state law. So is there a motion for any, either of these models that someone would like to propose? And I will remind the board that since we do have a board member that's virtual, that this will also have to be a roll call vote.
It's really quiet here. I make a motion that we approve Model D3 for boundary adjustments.
Okay. So we have a motion by Director Lind to approve Model D3. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Director Carly Anderson. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I do.
Director Lind?
Either one works. I mean, as best as it can. The reason I'm leaning towards D3 is the lack of movement by students and.
The lesser movement.
What?
The lesser movement.
The lesser movement by students and the more parent support for D3. I don't know if I vote for E3, what do I tell those parents? The majority of the parents, 59% to go out with D3. I don't have an answer for that. But that's really, I could live with either one, but I think D3 is a better choice at this time.
Director Carly Anderson?
Yeah, I think, I'll just restate, I support D3 because we have a design team of experts who looked at the data with teamwork. We have the parent input, we have the support from the input team. To me, it's across the board. If we have to make a decision, I'm going to go with the one that, that has the most support.
Any further comments or discussions? I've sat in on the input and design teams as well and listened to the discussion about both models. During the one session that I was in, it was, it was pretty equal comparatively speaking between the both, but obviously one pulled forward as the one that the district is recommending that we move forward with or that they support more based on that. Like I said, there's no, there's no perfect answer.
No.
Director Thompson, did you, you had your hand up and then it went away, so I don't know if I missed you.
No.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, so we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Kim, would you do the roll call, please?
Amy Anderson?
Why do I always get called first?
She, it's a randomizer, it's a randomizer.
Go pass.
Can I pass?
No.
We change our minds on votes all the time, so.
It's really hard.
Every time.
Good. Brian Thompson? Gary Lynn?
Yes.
Judy Keller?
Yes.
Carly Anderson?
Yes.
Reese Schindler?
No.
All right, so motion carries four to three. We'll move on to our next recommended action, which is the revised budget. Bill, are you presenting that?
Madam Chair, Directors of, oh, I'm sorry, Directors of the School Board and Superintendent Van Zyl. As soon as the parp hangs up, we'll go through it. As always each year, you know, the budget that was brought forth to you back in June, we have a lot of assumptions in that budget. And now after we've done all the hiring and we know what's in place, we bring forward a revised budget, excuse me. So tonight, we're going to go through what those, what the changes are, what we're looking at from where we were last year, now that we have solid numbers from last year. Hit the right button here. Okay. As you know, our revenue is almost entirely driven by the number of students that we have in our buildings. And you can see in this, this is the same data that we presented last fall. And you'll see that there is a change. When we talked back in, in June, we had a projection at that time that today, that in this year's enrollment, that we'd see, we'd see about 12, 12,077 students. But that isn't as many as we received. We're at 12,022 students at this, at this point in time. So that adjustment has been made in this budget as a lesser revenue from the state of Minnesota. This slide I brought forward again, just so everyone realizes where we are seeing the pressure. If you look at the center, center graph, that blue line, that's where we are today. So you can see in the middle schools, over the last few years, it's been relatively flat. We really haven't saw a big change. We're seeing a little more this year, as you see, we're up a little bit this year and we're seeing a lot of pressure at Century Middle School. But as we begin to the next year and the year after, they start to pop up pretty fast. So that's where we will see our pressure when we look at the need for facility space in our buildings. When we look at our revenues, you see that under local other, you see moving from last year to this year, that's actually a decrease, overall decrease. We really saw a drop in our donated funds to the school district this past year. So that's really what that changes, really coming back in line where we expect the dollars to be from our donations. When we look at state sources, of course, we did have a, some new money. We've talked about it quite a bit, has it been more than we've ever received ever before? You see there, we'll talk through the details in a minute, but it's $17.3 million. And our property tax has an increase this past year of 7.4 million. That's almost entirely due to the inflation that's tied to our operating levies. And we'll talk about that detail in a second. Federal, you see that's decreasing. Of course, that's because COVID is coming up. We don't, pretty much have dried up all our COVID funds and now we're just back down to what we receive for our special ed and title funding. We look at our detail on our state sources, we do have $17 million of new money. Of course, 4%, we get it right now, we're right. Of course, four percent, we get it right now, we're right about a hundred million dollars from the state of Minnesota. So four percent is about four million dollars. Also, when we look at the growth of our student, we are still up two hundred students this year. So that growth piece, this money that we need for new staff to support those new students is one and a half million dollars coming from the state of Minnesota. Special education, our aid changed there from one year to the other is three million dollars. With our growth, they're at about a two hundred thousand dollars for any new students that are there. And of course, the cross subsidy change at five point nine million. ELL, there's some new money at a hundred thousand dollars. This is cut off a little bit, so I apologize for that. But that seven hundred thousand are compensatory dollars. And this is an area where we were concerned because of the way that we've been count, they count our students for free and reduced in the past, and we don't have an incentive for people to fill the paperwork out. We really thought we were going to lose some money here. But they have changed the way they're counting them, counting the students from the county. So we actually saw an increase here. So that's very good news for us. I have to remember what's the next word on here.
Oh, because you can't. Brian's in the way.
Is there any way you can move Brian to the top of the slide? Okay, I'm trying to remember now, state, the state here, yeah. We got a, we have some brand new restricted funds. These are brand new for this year. And that's our student support aid and our library aid. That's between the two of them, that's four hundred thousand. Of course, we've got the expenses on their side, so it really isn't any ink in any revenue new here that we can use somewhere else. And then a big thing is our unemployment. We have to account for unemployment. At this point in time, we expect it to hit a million dollars this year. We're almost there. We have to still, have to do June, but of course, we have the expenditures on their side. So we have new, new revenue here, but it goes out the other side. And LTFM, we have about three hundred thousand more in aid portion. Most of it's levy, as you know, but we do have a little bit more aid coming through from the state of Minnesota. Sorry. Now look at the tax side. The top line is our referendum, our operating referendums. And that's where we really see any money that comes in new that's available unrestricted. That's a three point three million dollars this year. A lot of that is due to the inflation piece that's on our operating levies. That inflation was a little higher last year and this is kind of a catch up now. Usually we're seeing, you know, maybe two million dollars there. Again, because, because of new enrollment, we're counting more students against that operating. So about six hundred thousand is because of new students and needed for new staff. All our assigned components, which is our, our A and I grant, for an example. We have quite a few lists here, about a half million dollars increase. But of course, that's all restricted funds. And our capital components, our operating capital, LTFM, these are all the levy pieces and their capital projects levy, here a hundred thousand, nine hundred and two hundred thousand, one point two million. All this money goes for capital pieces in our budget. And then we have some prior year adjustments there, one point eight million. That's one time money that won't be there next year. We look at the expenditure side, what changed with our expenditures? From twenty-three to twenty-four, you see about a half million dollars. And the top line says administration. The second one says support services. You see there's two hundred thousand dollars there as an increase, as a mainly increases to all our staff in this area. Elementary and secondary education at three point nine million. Vocational about a hundred thousand, special education at three million dollars. You see a community ed line here. You haven't saw that in the general fund in the past, but that's unemployment for community education that has to run through the general fund at a hundred thousand dollars. Instructional support services, you see, actually see a decrease here. And that's due to, we don't have a big purchase this year of new devices for our students. So that's why you're seeing a decrease here. Otherwise, overall, it is an increase. People support services, it's three hundred thousand, but almost entirely due to transportation on our new contract. And the sites and buildings, of course, were up four hundred thousand dollars from the year before. Mainly LTFM dollars. Fiscal and fixed programs, this is mainly our, our insurance. And we are seeing some savings. Our mod factor is better now with our workman's comp and we're seeing some savings there. So overall, we're spending another five point four million dollars. It's not showing into the data points. So I'm not sure what happened there. But the orange, the large orange piece of the budget is from the state of Minnesota. So I just want people to realize when they're, when you're paying your taxes, actually the majority of the dollars comes to the state of Minnesota. It doesn't come from our property taxes. But our property taxes is the, the gray area there. And then our blue area, that is any local, so it's any fees that we're collecting. And it's just, we've got some other, other things that come in that tiny little sliver of yellow. Expenditures, our regular education, as you're seeing in that gray area on the right-hand side, so by far the majority of our budget. That yellow piece down to the bottom, that's our vocational dollars. And the yellow is our special education. And then our support pieces on the, the green and the purple on the left. So it's all our, our support, support for our students, like our counselors and so forth. And then when you get to that purple, that's our transportation. So I'm sorry those numbers didn't come up. They were, they were in the one I sent over, so I apologize for that.
It's okay.
So here's our budget overall, kind of a, you can see now that revenues are up to nine, hundred ninety-eight thousand, hundred ninety-eight million. We're just under two hundred million dollars in our budget. There's other financing sources, the majority of that, of course, is our ALC that we sold. And we have, we have some small solar leases that are tied to that. Then our expenditure is at a hundred ninety-seventh. So we expect our fund balance to increase at a minimum of two point eight million dollars, up to almost four million for the, as June thirtieth this year. Our student nutrition fund, you see, that's very healthy. We actually have a limit. We're only having six months in that fund balance of our total, of our total. And we're way at five and a half. So that's something to watch, but again, it's very healthy. We've been using that fund wherever we can. For an example, we did use some funds from this area for our new kitchen in the new building. All the equipment was bought from here. Community education, as you know, during the pandemic, they really got hit pretty hard. They went to a negative position and they're slowly increasing. So we're going, they're going to improve their fund balance by about a hundred thousand dollars by June thirtieth. Building fund, of course, this is what's running, all our, most of our LTFM runs through this area and of course, our new building. It's that twenty-three under other financing is the new bonds we sold this past fall. And so that, not the, the fund balance doesn't really change a lot, but we are spending twenty-three million dollars in that area. Of course, that's to be expected, we're just finishing up a building. Debt service, again, you'll see a negative change in fund balance. We've talked about this, that every single year, the district has the ability to levy a hundred and five percent of what they need. That way, if someone doesn't pay their taxes, we still have enough funds to make their debt service payments. Of course, we haven't been shorted there, so that million dollars is going back to our taxpayers. Trust fund, this is our scholarships. These are, these are funds that have been given to the, like, these funds are not used for scholarship. It's only the interest that's earned on them. So you're seeing, that's why it starts at eight hundred and sixty thousand, ends at eight hundred and sixty thousand. And then our internal service fund, of course, is our, is our internal health program and our dental program for our employees. We're in year number four of this, so we've been building that fund balance is looking pretty good. We ended last year at six point seven million. We expect it to get up to about six, seven point six. We really, the goal there is to get up to twenty-five percent of the total cost of that program before we can really start buying down our, our premiums.
Bill, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So where it says community service fund, that's community ed, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And you're saying that that dip was just from COVID and they're trying to earn their way back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of, almost every program in community education is fee based.
Right.
So when the pandemic came and everything stopped that spring, we still had all the employees that were being paid, but we had no revenue.
Plus, they, they also had to step up and do some things. They had programs in place that they had to do.
The state said that we had to offer daycare for.
Correct.
Different populations, which we did.
Yeah.
Of course, we had no revenue for it. So that dropped their fund balance down into the negative.
So isn't part of that community ed money, like from our preschool program? Correct? So then, knowing that that building's like full at capacity, it's kind of hard to grow that when that's one of our biggest revenues, if they can't have more classrooms. Is that, am I wrong on that?
You are correct.
Okay.
That, well, really the daycare program that they run really is their biggest moneymaker, what kinds of subsidizes all the other program. But yes, without more spaces, they can't earn more revenue.
Right.
So that's why you're seeing this repair or improvement going very slow.
Okay.
Okay. Last year, their, their fund balance went up about a hundred and fifty thousand. And here we're seeing about a hundred, and I think when we get done, it'll probably be closer to the one fifty.
Right.
But to be conservative, we're at a hundred.
Right. I just wanted to just make a point that our preschool program is growing. And that we have a lot of people that like that program. And it's just hard when we don't have any space in the building. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Director Thompson has his hand up, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah. And hey, just to clarify, the community service fund, the early childcare education, like the, the revenue that they get, it is to, it is to a dollar amount where it is to kind of like offset the cost of the program. So it's not like additional funding goes into our general fund to pay for other educational expenditures for us. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, to say, when, when all of our funds, they're by law, I can't take any money from any fund to the general fund. We can do the opposite. We can take general fund money and put anywhere we want. But we can't put anything into the general fund from the other funds.
Got it. So, so there is a need, there is a growth opportunity in the community service fund with the assumption that we've got capacity, buildings, locations available for that growth. But it's not one where additional growth is going to generate additional revenue for the cost of our student education. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, we can't move the dollars and they are limited now on their space. So the dollars that they are generating now is really the limit they have. They're just, they're raising what they have to in order to cover any increased costs and, and staff. So I don't think we'll see a recovery any faster than what we're seeing.
Just going to keep us going for the sake of time.
Okay, what's really, this is, this is what I have to present as then tonight. So there's any other questions?
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised budget?
I'll make a motion.
I'll get him. We have a motion by Director Kelleher. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Shindley. Director Thompson, did you have something to discuss on this?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion, but it's already done. And, and so I'll, I'll make a couple of comments here. I'm not ready to approve this budget for a couple of reasons. Number one, I am, I'm glad that there's a three point nine million dollar savings account of projected, projected fund balance in June, which is really good. I mean, so for those that are newer on the call, I mean, ideally you want about ten percent in your savings account from how much you bring in in your revenues and expenditures. We want to be about twenty million dollars in our savings account. And right now, we're sitting at about three, three point nine, or let's say four percent, which is really two percent of our, I mean, it's not, it's, that's not very good. So we want to be at about twenty million dollars. We've got a sixteen million dollar gap in trying to even get to five percent, which is what our policies states that we actually need. It's a six million dollar gap that we still have to go. The question that I have for you, Bill, is that when we did our preliminary budgeting back in September of last year, or maybe it was June of last year, and then we even got an update, I think in September, we had forecasted about a hundred and ninety-four point two million dollars in expenditures. And now I see a hundred and ninety-seven. That's a two point eight million dollar difference of variance, which is huge. And, and so I don't know what exactly, what that entails. And so until I get enough information around that, I don't, I don't feel comfortable right now with, with approving from my point of view the, the one ninety-seven, because that's what I would like to know. Do we need to make this decision today?
We already have a motion and a second on the floor. So we, we can put it to a vote and see what the board thinks about that. So you've heard Brian, or Director Thompson's discussion on the questions that he has around the report. The motion was made by Director Kelleher and we have a second by Director Shindley. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call, roll call vote. Kim?
Wait, I'm sorry, I just had a quick discussion item. I just, I just want everybody to know that this was highly discussed and deeply discussed in our work session. So I don't know if something new has surfaced since then, but.
If you remember last week, we did talk about the changes from the one budget to.
Correct.
Last week.
Yep.
It's very common when we get going through the, the new revised budget, that we see different employees, they need to be reclassified in different areas.
Yep.
So we are seeing some small adjustments when it comes to different program areas, which we didn't take a lot of time on. But the, the new revenues that we talked about, if you remember from last, last week, we had some state, you know, we had a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there. I mean, we had some LEP funds, we had some endowment funds. We had, of course, the unemployment, which we talked about earlier, it's a million dollars. So these are new revenues, but of course, they're also new expenditures. So that's why we're seeing both the revenues higher.
Eight.
By just under three million and the expenditures up by about just under three million.
Yep.
Okay. Kim, can you lead the roll call vote, please?
Reece Shindley?
Yes.
Brian Thompson? Brian?
Director Thompson, it's your turn to vote.
Yeah, no.
Kim Baker?
Yes.
Carly Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Kelleher?
Yes.
Jerry Lynn?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries six, six to one. We'll go ahead and move on, just for the sake of time, we have five minutes left. Superintendent, did you have a report?
I'll be very quick. Hopefully the weather is holding out there and we're not having to worry about snow. I haven't seen the outside for a while today. We do have a lot going on across the district. Our, our winter seasons are wrapping up. Hopefully you're keeping an eye on the calendar. I know some board members attended a play at the middle school. There's other activities going on, so please make sure you're taking that into account. As we shared, we did have a tentative agreement. The association still has to do the ratification of that. I would tell you if and when that happens, I would probably ask that we have a special meeting rather than waiting till the end of March, if we have the ability to do that, so we can move forward with that process and help support them as well if, if it gets to that area. So just giving you that particular heads up. Other than that, we'll wrap it up so we can get done in time.
All right. Having completed all the items on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Kelleher, second by Director David Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need to do roll call for that?
Director Thompson, did you, did you vote yes?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
I think we need to do roll call for it, though.
Okay. Yep. Go ahead.
I'll roll call myself, yes.
Yeah.
He said yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you for joining us.